Welcome to the five o'clock workshop regarding the recycling center building. We're about to hear from our town engineer. You climb up there and introduce yourself and we'll be off and running.
Make sure that mic's on.
It's on. Thank you, everyone. Will Haskell with Coral Palmer, we're a town engineer. We've been working with the town on the recycling center project for probably far too long now. Started out with phase one because the project was bigger than the town wanted to take on right at the beginning. So phase one was actually the outside kind of exterior improvements to the parking lot. The compactors, the concrete slab up to the compactors, all of that exterior work, some improvements to the drainage pond. And took a little bit of a break and then I think reached out to us again to restart phase two, which is related to the building. And that was actually several years ago. And we had put together a subconsultant team, including us as the as the prime, where civil engineers kind of site civil engineers. So we don't do a lot of building work. So we retained Salas O'Brien. It's formerly Allied Engineering out of Portland to help us out with mechanical, electrical plumbing and structural. And I guess that's where we where we started. Made several site visits and met with Chuck to talk about the improvements. Came up with a list of improvements and we prepared a conceptual design report with some cost estimates. And I'll get to that in a second. Just kind of giving you a rundown of backstory here. We put together some cost estimates finally in 2024. I believe we presented that information to the select board at the time. Can't remember if it was a workshop or a select board meeting. Then we moved into what I would say preliminary design. And once we got that done at the end of 2024, we had retained a professional estimator to put together costs to kind of see where we were. And when those came back, it was a little eye opening. They were quite a bit more expensive than the the estimate that we had put together as part of the conceptual design. So that's that's kind of where we are. So I'm here back in front of you folks to present some high costs, which is pretty similar to my my recent sea level rise projects, which are high costs as well. But so we'll get into the into the nitty gritty of that. Let's see if I can get the clicker to work here. So in general, without getting into a lot of detail, I mean, the the upgrades that we talked about for the building included new roofing, new walls, structural improvements. Actually, you asked us to look at whether we could improve the structural capacity of the building to take solar panels on the roof. What we found was that was not very feasible. So we kind of dropped that off off the radar screen. The roofing and the walls, we looked at insulated steel panels for both. We looked at some additional heating, ventilation and air conditioning inside the building. There's there's minimal heating in there now, a little bit of ventilation mostly from the doors being open, which is pretty impractical in the wintertime. We looked at some plumbing improvements at the restroom facilities, mainly you know, improvements with new fixtures and new sanitary sewer connections, et cetera, et cetera. We also looked at a new electrical service, three-phase service, now that there's three-phase out on Mountain Road. When we started phase one on this project, I don't believe three-phase was out on Mountain Road. It was single-phase service. With the compactors, it would be ideal to have three-phase three-phase service in there. So we looked at upgrading that and upgrading all the kind of electrical components, receptacles, wiring, et cetera, to bring that up to code. And then there was some site work, additional site work as well, which is mostly drainage related, including taking some existing roof runoff, adding a new gutter system. That roof runoff currently drops onto the slab in front of the compactors and flows into the detention pond. Doesn't need to. So we were going to take that and get it into a separated storm drain that discharges out to the ditch along Mountain Road. The other piece we were looking at with the with the site work was there is an existing floor drain system inside the building. Not very functional right at the moment. We we had Weber TV that. But that floor drain system actually ties into the septic system, which is not a great idea to have a floor drain tied into a septic system. So we had also included some pricing and some upgrades to put in a holding tank. So disconnect that that floor drain, tie it into a holding tank outside the building. That would be a regular maintenance item that would have to be pumped out on a regular basis when the holding tank fills up and taken to a facility that can that can process that.
Is that because of what's likely to go down that floor drain is going to be possibly nasty stuff?
Yeah. So the state basically doesn't allow floor drains to tie into drainage systems and really into septic systems because obviously septic systems basically infiltrates into the ground. They prefer them to either tie into a municipal wastewater system or to a holding tank that gets pumped out and taken to a municipal wastewater system to get treated. So again, floor drain may see a little bit of, you know, drippings from vehicles going in and out during a rainy day or something like that. You might see some water that gets into the floor drain system. It was fairly well clogged when Rep. Weber went in and looked at it and TV'd it. So I think they jetted it out. So it probably works a little bit better now, but it's still connected to the septic tank, directly to the septic tank and then pumped to the subsurface wastewater system.
What's what's the idea of getting rid of the detention pond and changing the drainage so it goes out into the ditch in in Mountain Road? What's the advantage of that?
Not getting rid of the detention pond. The detention pond is still going to be there, taking all the flow from the parking lot and the access drive that wraps around the end of the building. The whole idea was is it was we were going to separate the roof drainage, which usually isn't contaminated because you don't have all the material on the pavement.
I got you.
And we don't need to get that. We don't need to have that go to the detention pond.
That makes sense. I get it now. Thanks.
Discharge it to the ditch. So that in general is is kind of a summary of of what the upgrades were that we we were looking at. So the next slide is a table that summarizes our cost challenges here. So the concept cost that we did without the estimator involved in 2024 was between $800,000 and $900,000. There was no contingency added into that. Unit cost worked out to about $215 a square foot. What we're finding is renovation costs are significantly higher than that based on getting PCM estimators involved. The preliminary cost done at the end of 2024, early 2025 was almost double. 1.8, if you round it, million dollars. There's a contingency involved with that of seven and a half percent, which equates to around, I think, $123,000 or so, just to give you a if you want to do an apples-to-apples comparison. That unit cost is about four, what did I say there? I can't read that on the screen, $420 a square foot. That unit cost is higher than what we are seeing for new buildings of this type of use. So we're we're pricing public works facilities now in the $275,000 to $300,000 a square foot as the as the current kind of unit cost rate. So you'll see down there at the bottom, I have a concept cost for a new metal building. In that case, we bumped that up a little bit because we added some for foundation and fit out of a building. So the foundation on this building is a little bit challenging in that you've got kind of the two levels to it. So there's there's a fair amount of of concrete work there for a foundation if we had to build a new one. We may be able to put a metal building on the existing one, but and then there's, you know, some kind of it's not challenging, but I would say unique fit out on the in the inside. So we bumped that up to about $350 bucks a square foot, just to give you a sense of what we think a new building would cost. So actually less than the renovation.
Why?
Because the renovation is just challenging and working in and around existing infrastructure. Adding, doing all the new electrical outfitting, doing all this stuff and demoing existing building, demoing portions of the existing building and then putting it back up. Where we're
Does that new building cost include the demo of the old building? Because that would obviously have to happen even if we're building a new building.
Yeah, you're you're right. I would say that 350 may not include that, but the demo cost is going to be
Minimal in comparison?
What about continued operation while the building is removed?
Absolutely. I'm not saying it's easy. I'm saying there's challenges.
How many square feet does the building, Chuck?
Four. It's the the main metal building is 4,000. I I've been using 4,200 when you add the little oil building on the side. That's probably a little bit bigger than what it actually is, but 80 by 40, I believe. I've been using 4,200 square feet for
My neighbor just put up a 40 by 100 for his car collection. And it was far, 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 far less than that.
Yep.
The the building itself, you know, the the metal building frame was 80,000.
Yeah. I mean, if you look at the, if you just go in and Google a metal building.
Yeah.
I mean, you're going to come up with a cost that's much less than 350, 350 bucks a square foot. So
I think he's probably in the $300,000 range.
So the other thing we did, I don't know if this has a pointer on it. I guess that wasn't it. But so the next lineup from the bottom, I skipped over a line there. I basically did a preliminary cost where I backed out the insulated panels that we used. But we priced in the preliminary cost above that and went just non-insulated metal panels, new roof. It's a little bit less. Was it that 1.4, 1.45?
We'll eat that savings up in energy expenditures because of the non-insulation though in no time.
We we looked at non-insulated metal sheathing and then doing, you know, separate insulation. That cost is almost as much as the insulated panels and you're going to get a way better product with an insulated panel.
Yeah, I I think so too.
I should have gotten, I was just down there with him yesterday. We were looking at it. It it's a really nice building. It's insulated. We did radiant heat. I'd get me in with some of the stuff.
Yeah.
You're talking about your neighbor?
Huh?
You're talking about your neighbor?
Yeah. Yeah. He's got a car collection.
So obviously, I mean, I I don't like being in these situations and have to make these presentations. I'll be the first to admit that. That's a big, big bust in terms of the the conceptual cost versus the preliminary cost. Definitely not happy with that, but it is what it is. The biggest challenge, and I'm going to lay out a couple of things here. And really what I I don't think that's where I was headed with this, but the big thing I'm concerned about is we're in this tariff situation now where metal products are likely going to just continue to go up. So I don't see that cost coming down any the longer we wait, unfortunately. I I understand the the challenge with the, you know, the operations. That is a challenge. I don't have an answer for that right off the top of my head. I'm sure Chuck would probably need to think about it as well. There was going to be a challenge even with just rehabbing the existing building though, because there was there would definitely be impacts.
You're going to empty the building one way or the other. So you you were going to have an empty building to rehab or an empty building to dump.
Right.
The the plan would be the same.
It's
Just logistics for me, where to put it, how to try to flow.
Right.
So like dumpsters in the parking lot or something like that? Put everything up back?
I can hear you.
Well, you need a mic.
Not shushed, it's the opposite.
Yeah. You're welcome.
Thanks, Will. So I mean, basically the plan was we'll probably use some those roll-off containers that you have the doors there, you know, to kind of build a bottle redemption area on the backside, but we need to, you know, figure out how big a footprint construction is going to require. Half our parking lot is going to be gone no matter what. So we're going to be back in similar situation like with COVID, where we had to do traffic control and all that type of thing. But we may move some things up to the transfer station just to keep traffic down below. You know, the the whole thing is going to just lessen the impact down below as much as possible traffic-wise. And, you know, try to slide some of it up top, but I mean, manpower is going to be stretched if we can get back to normal manpower at all. And then, you know, there there is going to be a challenge one way or the other. Is it quicker to put up a new building? I would think so.
I would think so if they could get in there and, you know, get that old one out of the way and
What would be the time estimate for either one of those roughly?
What did we figure? We figured, I think it was six to eight total, right?
Yeah.
Month?
Yeah.
If you're looking at a construction season.
Yeah. And I'm assuming most of this would have to be done in the warmer weather.
We wouldn't lean towards trying to do it in the fall.
Right, in the off-season. That's what makes most sense.
We need the less amount, at least amount of traffic.
Right. That's what would make the most sense to me, do it in the off-season if it was possible to do that type of
The winters have been fairly mild. I mean, the last
Except for the last one.
Well, even then, the plow trucks will plow in two inches, no, not two, not two feet.
One other item I'll just mention that there was already some items that are cut, were cut out of this scope that were desires or wants, a generator, for example. That's not in this, that it's not in these numbers. So there were some, there were some other items that Chuck wanted, has wanted for a long time that aren't in those numbers. So that is just the items that I talked about, not it doesn't include the generator, doesn't include I can't remember what else we cut out of that.
Heat.
Yeah.
Heat.
I mean, I I do think we need to talk about the financing aspect because we had enough money for the
The 900.
The the $900,000 project, but we don't have enough money. The voters haven't approved enough money for something different, whatever that something different might be.
At this point, the soonest we could get something like that approved, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm just guessing here, is is the March town meeting?
November.
I mean, I think you could put something on November, but I don't know if we've really given a lot of thought to Well, I mean, I don't know if you know the direction you want to go.
Yeah, we're running out of time if we want to get it out. When would we have to make that decision, I guess, if we wanted it on the
For November.
For November.
Next meeting.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
That's a lot of information to process and
Yeah.
And that, well, that's my only concern. If we push this out to a March town meeting, that 1.7 quickly becomes 2.1 and then 2.5, I mean
Yeah, I was hoping it was more like 1.4, but I I think this tariff issue is is a concerning one because it can change so much. Such an unknown.
I think that we've had a few discussions just in passing that as a group, we probably need to figure out what direction the town wants to go and what uses we're planning on this building having so we can get a more concise view of what we want done over there.
Right.
And then, once we know what the actual mission for this building is going to be, then we can put together the final plan. I'm I'm thinking we're not going to see construction until fall of '26 or spring of '27. I mean, that's probably the most realistic at this point, without rushing the voters, without rushing us putting our heads together, figuring out exactly a plan moving forward as far as personnel, use of the building, you know, all that stuff. We haven't rushed it up till now. 2027 will be the 10-year anniversary of the start of this. So why rush it now?
It's right up this with the boat launch then. It's everything else.
I mean
They'll be picking.
I know one thing that was briefly mentioned, public works. To utilize that building for typical public works. I mean, there's a couple of things. It looks like my slide got cut off down at the bottom, but you know, you'd definitely need some changes to HVAC potentially, which goes back to insulation and then vehicle exhaust system, if you're going to have vehicles in there running on a regular basis.
Just going in and out.
You would need to have a vehicle exhaust and then I think we'd want to think about the size of the the floor drain tank that we've proposed because right now I don't think there's I can't remember what I've got in there, if it's a 1,000 or 1,500 or 2,000 gallon tank, but with public works vehicles going in and out of there, you're probably going to end up generating more to use that. So that tank might go up as well.
Well, the new fire station is, there's a proposal to use part of that for public works.
Okay.
To store the town's boat and things like that because it'll be a while before we expand into the the full, all the bays are used for fire engines and ambulances.
How many square feet do you need, Chuck? You you need, you don't need that whole building to run your operation, do you?
I think the footprint will be just about will be right for public if we try to make it a dual-purpose building, establish a public works, have it be I'm not planning on, I mean, I don't, I don't, my own vision for public works doesn't see the town investing in excavators and all this stuff like that. It's more juggling vendors and you know, having some equipment, but we're not going to go down the road of, you know, building a project town, you know, public works. I don't see that at all for the town. I see it more as like a centralized, you know, for plowing, you know, to to deal with all the you know, the maintenance issues in town, basically, as far as that. But, you know, I mean, there's times right now, I mean, we did a major clean out of the building, but when we're full of e-waste and all this and that, there's certain stuff that we cannot store outside. It has to be stored undercover.
That's what I was getting at.
So, you know, e-waste, when this picked up, it's basically 24 pallets. We did put some kind of a shelving system in there. We can put about 10 pallets on one wall now. But it still takes up a lot of floor area and the bottles and cans just take up a ridiculous amount of area also. Plus, we have a work area. I I think I think moving forward, you're dealing with the footprint that we have, basically. You mentioned the foundation, but I I think the foundation is the same height all the way around, if I remember right. I don't see, I don't, it's, you're you're seeing it as split level because the parking part is higher, but the actual footprint of it is all the same height.
You may be right.
Yeah.
It's sitting on ledge, isn't it?
It's a, the the foundation's pretty bulletproof, I think, as far as me. I don't, I don't I've never seen a foundation that thick. I don't know.
I just don't know
There's a lot of concrete there at one point.
If we can, you know, a lot of these metal building manufacturers are, they have standard stuff.
I think when, I think, so initially, when we started talking about this last decade, we were, my whole thought process was it's got to be cheaper to take that rector set building, strip off the skin off of it, reuse the frame, replace, you know, or patch whatever's there because it's all, I mean, these things aren't rocket science. These buildings really aren't. And then, you know, reskin it, put a new roof on it, do whatever upgrades you wanted to do. Definitely electrical is the biggest challenge over there. I think we can all agree on that. But, you know, and at the time, I went web surfing and looked at prices of buildings and if I remember right, I found an exact footprint building. So I don't know how challenging that really would be. I mean, you got, you have the right contacts to find out exactly what it is, but but it's a pretty standardized building. When they built the place, they weren't, they didn't have some big spec card of, you know, of odd dimensions or anything like that. They just went through a catalog and said, that looks pretty good. And it's a pretty, pretty consistent building size anyways, so I don't think that's going to be a huge issue. I think the foundation's reusable. We're going to have to do the drainage one way or the other, whether we use it for single use.
Yeah.
Or we try to make it adaptable so we can have multiple uses in the future. If all the real difference there is maybe catch cans or grains or whatever, the cages or a bigger tank, it seems like why not put the bigger tank in now and be done with it?
Yeah, the drainage and the tank, you know, the are relatively small potatoes in this, in this, in this piece here.
All right. So where are we at right now then?
And I know it, I think we as a group, and maybe you want to pull more people in, however you want to handle it, need to have a clear and concise plan for what the town, what direction the town wants to go in, what we want to use this building for, before we go, hey, 1.4 looks, sounds great. And then we end up, like Matt said, come back and it's 2.1 just because we're using it for dual purpose. If we're going to do the building, we need to do it once and do it right.
I agree.
We've got a 40-year-old building on there that's, last time it's really been touched was 40 years ago. I mean, it hasn't, it's not a high maintenance building anyways, but it's not, you know, there's things that could have been done to keep it in better shape over the years, that's for sure.
40-plus.
Yeah. Yeah, we're, yeah, we're at 45 this year or last year, whatever.
I was working on it. I worked for letting
You're old, Kevin.
I bought a can crusher.
I think, I think as a, as a group, we just need to, like I said, pull whoever we want in, whatever it is, but figure out what direction we want to go with. You know, the the departments, the melding of different departments, however you want to handle it, what we really want to get out of this building, what our vision is for five to 10 years down the road, as far as that. But I would like to see the building done before I retire.
Well, if we hold off on doing the building, that means we get to keep you longer then, right?
No.
I tried.
I have plans, Matthew. But I think, I think we need a clear vision of what we want before we can really make this thing move forward with an actual plan, actual more accurate numbers. I'm not, I'm no engineer, but the electrical part of this whole thing has got me flummoxed as how much it is. It's not I mean, I understand industrial buildings are different beasts altogether, but I I think we've looked at it both ways with or without VFDs for soft starts, that type of thing. I don't know if we've ever come to an actual conclusion because we've got a 50/50 split, whether we need them or not. So I mean, that may be something we need to make sure is at least budgeted in, but might be a savings down the road, you know? I'm not sure if that, has it still has them or not. I can't remember now.
I think it's, I think it's in there.
Is it, or on what, the sixth, seventh iteration of this? So, but I think we, I think as a town, we just need a clear, clear path moving forward. Some decisions just made kind of a a path to where we want to be. And then decide what we really want to do with the building and hopefully get something going by '27.
I agree.
Are you thinking like a small task force that might take it on or?
Whatever you think is appropriate.
I mean, I think
I, I'm not the only reason, I don't know the answer to this, but is that something the recycling committee? I just threw it up.
We could have a member from it, maybe.
Yeah, or something, I don't know. I didn't know if we already had maybe a committee already established that might know about this.
I think maybe instead of having one specific group, be it, I think, putting it together, pulling from
Yeah, that's fine too.
Pulling from different, you know, expertise and and getting something together.
I do like your idea though of coming up with a plan and a mission statement and stuff out because otherwise you're just going into it blind.
Yeah. And we don't want to put all this money into something and then look and say, you know, well, now we want to do this with it and have to spend another half million to $800,000 to the way we want.
Buy once, cry once.
Yeah.
If we waited this long, let's get it right. That's what, basically what goes down.
That's what we did with the fire station up there.
That's what you got to do.
Do it once.
Yes.
All right.
I think I just got you off the hook for tonight.
You have to for now.
But in the same breath, we need better communication and keeping, you know, in the loop here. It seems like there's been awful long dry spells of not communicating. the loop here, it seems like there's been awful long dry spells of not communicating and seeing where we are and letting it flounder, I'm, I mean, anti-flounder.
Got it.
What's the next step?
I think the board needs to consider if you want to have a, a small group of people with certain expertise, like, maybe someone from recycling, but somebody with some building experience, obviously Chuck involved.
Yeah.
But, but I think it's gotta be kind of a, a fast-track type of thing, where, you know, you give them a mission, but, you know...
It's where we get Chuck involved, he can speed things along, he's got retirement to get to, he just...
It would be nice to have something for the March twenty twenty-six town meeting.
Yeah, at the late...
Yeah, right, right.
I think the voters will feel better with some final clarification too, we've been, you know, asking for money for quite a while now, we've built up the piggy bank, of course, but I think, I think people really need to feel good about and know what they're actually getting, and, you know, I mean, it's gonna be a building one way or the other, but, you know, I, I think the town's at the point now where some aspect of a, of public works, you know, grouping together would probably be the right way to move forward.
Yeah, it sounds like our vision for the building is changing somewhat, and maybe you do wanna bring in a component of somebody who's familiar with public works even, that might wanna contribute to the conversation.
I think myself, at least one selectman, one member of the recycling committee, and then maybe three or four more people, just pulling from places that, you know, anybody you can think of with some expertise in building or public works or whatever, as far as that.
What's that get us, seven people then?
I think seven people or...
Yeah, I think that's a good number.
Six or seven.
You don't want more than that, 'cause then you start running into problems.
If you get too many, then you get into scheduling issues, scheduling seven people who can always make a meeting.
Different opinions, right?
Six, seven.
We agree on that.
Yeah.
All right, we'll put together a list.
Well, maybe...
But short and sweet, though.
Chuck, we can work on that, having some type of mission statement by next meeting.
And if you think of anyone, Chuck, forward it to maybe one of us, you know, I mean, you're the guy that knows it best, so, if there's anybody you think that would be helpful to the cause, speak up.
Yep, definitely.
You wanna come take a look at the building in my neighborhood?
Yeah, I mean, I'm all for field trips, it gets me out of there.
It's, it's brand-new.
Are the cars in there yet?
No, he, he just had the floor sealed the other day.
All right, I'll come down, check it out when the car's in.
Can we relocate operations over there?
Pretty nice, it didn't cause that.
Only after he seals the floor.
Yeah, it's sealed, they did it yesterday, the day before.
But I, I just think a clear, clear path forward is gonna make everything so much easier, and, you know, and I need time to really put a plan together, I also wanna be able to have a contract that's multi-year during this, so we don't have to worry about that aspect of it either, I think, everything off the plate that can be off the plate so we can concentrate on the project at hand.
For the waste disposal.
Right, yeah, so, you know, get, get things timed out, figure out what, where we need to address what, and get it to, make it as smooth a process as we can.
All right.
To be continued.
At least we have a plan.
Yeah, we have a plan.
Let me know what you need from me.
Okay.
Like, well...
You might need to present to the initial task force group, the background, yeah, okay. Thank you. How are we doing, Chuck?
All right.
Do you wanna recess until six?
Do we, do we have the option to keep going, just get it, to see if we get out of here, I'm joking.
We only have the workshop on, so, yeah, yeah.
Terry wasn't quite sure.
What?
If we keep, keep going.
Well, the meeting starts at six for the other agenda items. They, they were thinking they could jump right into some other things.
No, I was joking, I was, I know we can't, I'm joking.
It's fine.
Three people watching would be disappointed.
Uh, yeah, they're gonna have to come up with something else to do for twenty minutes.
You have more of an audience than you realize.
Does it tell you how many people are watching?
Yeah, and all like on the Facebook, on live...
On the Zoom?
I don't know if it does on Zoom or not.
My cousin watches it.
On TV. Really?